Drive's early. Yep. Call the meeting to order. It's Monday, December 4th, 2023. At 5:30 PM, we'll start out with roll call.
Carmen?
Rosa.
Buska?
Yes.
Fortune?
Here.
McConnell?
Here.
Greener?
Yes.
Next is the consent agenda. That is number one, approval of the agenda. Number two, approval of claims. Number three, approval of minutes from November 20, 2023. Number four, approval of minutes from November 22nd, 2023 special meeting. Number five, approval of minutes from November 27th, 2023 special meeting. And number six, approval of minutes from November 29th, 2023 special meeting.
So, move. Second.
Buska?
Yes.
Greener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Next, staff reports.
I'll do both of them.
Okay.
As far as public works, there is a water main breakup on Red Maple Court that will be fixed tomorrow. We'll be meeting with the DNR and WHKS this week for the aging equipment. There, just a reminder that the winter parking ordinance is in effect from now until April 15th. As far as admin, we're busy with month end and budget. We'll be meeting with Joe Braun about a possible easement on the yardway site tomorrow as well. And then we do need to schedule another budget work session. Is there any dates that work best for anybody? We're thinking maybe the 18th.
Of September or December?
Yep.
September?
Not September.
Maybe 3:30, 4 o'clock. Thoughts?
That works for me.
Yeah.
Well, that'd be before our next meeting then.
Yeah, before the meeting.
Okay. Yeah, 4 o'clock works.
Alex?
Yeah, that'll work.
Jan? Okay, that's all good.
Make a note here, quick. All right, next, police chief, what do you have for us tonight?
Just looking at some of the November numbers, threw up a few items for asking calls. The hospital might as well assist calls for quite a bit this last month. And we had quite a bit of traffic, 78 warnings, 23 citations that were issued. And then I did do a conditional offer on one of our candidates.
Okay.
He accepted it right now. Just waiting for a couple items to get back.
Okay.
Hopefully, we'll have a new hire.
Potential start date of?
Well, I put a potential start date is December 18th, so two weeks from today.
Sure. Good. Good.
All right.
Good. Thank you. Any committee updates? Any comments from the audience? A couple anniversaries tonight, including Chief Arudin, 12 years with the city of Cresco, and Jason Miller in the Water Department, 13 years. Thank you both for your service and thank you very much, yes. So, on to the regular part of the budget, our business tonight. Tim Wilson is up first, Dixon Engineering.
Good evening, Mayor Council. I just wanted to stop back and update you on progress with the tank. I see the next three items are basically all of tank-related stuff on your agenda anyway. So, wanted to take the opportunity to come back and get together with you, kind of walk through where we're at with the project. You see the next several items. The project is essentially done. The last pay request is in front of you this evening. All of the items have been addressed that were on our last punch list to work through with the contractor. So, those items have been completed. The remaining items are unrelated to BRZ, the contractor that completed the coating work. The remaining items are to continue to work with the three antenna providers that are on top of the tank. I've been talking to Barry with Harmony Tel, Dave Newbar.
Yep.
Haven't heard anything more back from him.
Okay.
Since our last conversation. And then also Kobe Mle... Mle... Mlepsy with Gigfire. And we've been back and forth a little bit with some of their plans of what they're planning to do. Gotten some comments back to them for the items that we would like to see completed. And that's really been it. I haven't heard any more. I've mentioned I got into town a little bit earlier than the meeting with the site before we still had some sunlight. There's some equipment on site that's been delivered to further reinstall, but haven't been contacted yet back. Our plan is for those providers to get their equipment reinstalled and we'll come back and inspect. And go from there, I guess, basically is where we're at with it.
Yeah.
Questions for me?
Haven't heard from LTP?
That's Gigfire.
Oh, Gigfire.
Yep.
Well, good.
They've been probably of the three, they gave me the most detailed information to work from. So, that allowed us to be able to kind of dictate. They're looking at changing the way power was run to their equipment as well. And I think they had communicated probably more with Drew on the type of structure to mount their power equipment to down below the tower rather than a... They used to have like an extension cord that ran from their building and up the tank. And every bit of that sounded bad to me. So, I thought, well, let's see what we can do to make this a little better. And they've come up with a kind of an H pattern type of a panel that will be mounted down below the tank where they can get their power source and then feed their equipment from there. So, it should clean that up considerably.
I think it'd be mounted, their hardware gonna be on top on that walkways on the very top?
That's what I have requested everybody to do. It's questionable if there will be enough room. Actually, Gigfire was the one who had indicated that they would like to be on the balcony still. I had said, no, we put that handrail up there mostly to get all of that equipment off the balcony. With, there should be plenty of room for everybody to get on the balcony. Now, if they can get the coverage that they desire from there... Excuse me, there should be enough room for everybody to get off the balcony and up onto the roof handrail. Whether they can get the coverage or the directions, you know, they're all gonna be wanting to fighting for specific quadrants, I would assume. I think Dave Newbar, that's just one single mast antenna, as I recall.
Correct. Okay.
So, that one shouldn't take up much space at all. And then the Harmony Tel equipment and the Gigfire equipment should be able to coexist all on that roof handrail, in my opinion. And that's the direction that I've given back to them. We don't really have a plan of attack. It's sort of, if you're there first, you're probably gonna get the space that you want.
Right.
So, that's the way I've left it with them. And still waiting to hear what their install schedule looks like. Like I say, there is some equipment that's been delivered on site. So, I assume at least one person will get back on there soon. But from our perspective, we have one visit left to come back and inspect after all three have been installed. And then I have to sort through who's who as quite a amount soon.
And they've all got very detailed instructions on how that stuff is being mounted and...
They all got the same instructions.
Goodness.
All the same?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Any questions on any of that?
Or questions on the other items on your agenda for the pay request or substantial provision, any of that for me?
Hard to object to a project that went that smoothly.
Yeah, that's a good hire, those guys. They did a wonderful job up there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a contractor that I didn't have personally a lot of experience with. And even as a company, we'd only had one or two projects with them. But they've excelled at the two that we previously had. And with the one that they'd completed here for the city, we were very happy with them. In sharp contrast, I've got another one that I'll never recommend again at the same kind of timeframe. So, it works like this.
Yeah. Yeah. Do we move to number two then for the resolution accepting work for the construction?
Motion.
Okay. Second half.
Fortune?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Greener?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
And then number three, approval of pay request, number two, the final, for $60,400, is that right? I got an extra zero. Is it $60,400 or $604,000?
$60,000.
$60,000, okay.
I'll make that motion.
All right.
Second.
McConnell?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Greener?
Yes.
Buska? Yes.
So, will you be back then after the final final?
Yeah, I'll be back one more time for the final inspection after everybody gets their antenna equipment.
And to a council meeting too, or not necessarily?
Not necessarily unless you'd like me to be.
I guess as long as we know that you're done and it's done, that's...
Yeah, I'll communicate with the staff to make sure that...
Yeah, unless something weird happens, but... All right, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Now, number four, Scott Hunnicky is here with WHKS to give us an update.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
So, I'll break these two projects down separately. So, I'd like to go over the downtown crosswalk project first. So, in running here tonight, I have pay request number five, like previous ones. All the items are broken down there. We have went through final qualities. We went out there, we surveyed. We have everything good to go on this pay request. There is only three signs that were scheduled to get installed either on Friday or today that we were hoping holding the final payment of that. So, I'm gonna verify that those signs are in tonight. And then at the next council meeting, we will be recommending the approval of the project. And then that will start the two-year warranty period on the project.
Okay.
So, tonight is just another, it's another pay estimate. One thing I'll point out there is I have change order three for removing the raised planter beds on this, on this payment. And I don't know if you've already had a resolution for that or not, so...
That's next on the agenda.
So, there was a portable stop sign down here, and I didn't look on the way into town. Now, you think that could have been taken care of today?
Yeah. Yep, that was slated to get taken care of.
Okay, I didn't look, I guess.
I didn't pay attention. I don't think there was a permanent sign there.
No, there wasn't when I drove up.
Earlier this morning, there wasn't, I don't think, but...
Unless something's changed that I didn't see coming up.
And then, I think, was there some, some building on the, on the street there too that got nicked or marred or something during construction? They were gonna come back and address?
The...
Do you know the address, Jan?
Quilters?
Quilters, yes.
Yes. Yep, yep, that I got across. That got brought to our attention and...
And do you know when they did that?
I think it was several weeks ago.
Oh. And have you seen it, Jan, or talked to them?
I drove by there and looked at it, and I saw there was like brown stuff in the cracks. But I didn't get a chance to talk to Katie to see if it was up to how she wanted it.
Gotcha. I know before it was like styrofoam boards on the front, and then they kind of split out, I'm not sure how. Then they push it back together and put concrete back on there to seal it back up, so...
Okay.
I'll check whether to make sure it's okay.
Yeah, I can reach out, I can talk to them.
So, do we need to do a resolution now for the change order then?
Yes.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
And that's a resolution approving change order number three for the downtown crosswalk reconstruction project.
Greener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Number six then is to approve the pay request number five, $117,611.8 for Wick's Construction, Inc. for the downtown crosswalk project. And you said that is not the final one?
Correct. Yep, there will be, we will be releasing the rest of the retainage at the next meeting. So, that 1% retainage that we're holding, that $11,000 will be released at the next one as the final thing.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Carmen?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Greener?
Yes.
Scott, I've been getting some questions on when the assessments will be sent out. So, after we accept it, do you have any kind of timeline of when we'll calculate the assessments and send the letters out?
To take another look at that, is the deadline for the county?
It's not till May 1st, so we have a little time. I've been telling them probably middle of January is when we probably mail them. Is that with the holidays and stuff? I'm just thinking it'll probably take us that long to get it finalized, right?
Yeah. Yep, that shouldn't be a problem.
Okay.
So, done with the sidewalks for tonight?
Yes.
Yep, okay. Next then, number seven, approval of pay request number five for $317,753.15 to Generation X Construction LLC for the Seventh Street West Reconstruction Project.
Yes. So, work on the Seventh Street project has started to slow down as we're getting into these freezing temperatures. Generation X is planning on coming back in on Wednesday and cleaning up a couple miscellaneous items on the road. But for the most part, after that, they're ready to leave town for the year and then come back in the springtime. So, I think the question, well, the discussions, the city staff have been to wait until we have a hard freeze on Seventh Street before we're taking out all of the road close signs. That's what the freeze and the thaw and all of a sudden we'll get a bunch of heavy traffic that... With that heavy traffic, you'd want to have a close monitoring of the road to make sure that nothing, you know, rock piles and what have you don't, don't form and there's no one there to address it. So, thought was to wait until we get a hard freeze, and then we can help the traffic back up. And then through all of winter, it'll be very minimal maintenance. And then in the springtime, once the thaw comes out and the maintenance will kind of start back again. And Generation X plans to come in in April. It's all gonna be weather depending. But once we kind of have the spring break, they're gonna come back in April, they're gonna touch up some things and then get ready for paving in May. So, that's the tenement schedule.
Is that road to grade right now, or is it gotta be raised some more?
So, the road is to subgrade. So, the road will be six inches higher once it's all set.
Once the concrete is put in?
Correct.
Okay, so you're gonna have a sloping angle coming off of the yards and stuff down to the road, basically, is the way it looks at this point then?
Yeah, once it's all set and done, so you'll have six inches of pavement and then at the edges of the road, you'll have six inches more of curb.
Okay.
On the very edge, you'll have a foot and then all the yards will drain over the top of the curb onto the road.
Okay.
And there's gonna be, what are they using to block off some of these risers and everything that are in the middle of the streets?
So, currently what they have out there is they have those black grades on the intakes on the edges of the road. I'm not sure if that's what you're referring to. So, the problem, the trouble is that we need to have those intakes accessible to take water. Otherwise, we're gonna have pools of water at those low spots. So, those, those intakes are gonna be how they are for, for the winter. That way, when the snowbells, it has somewhere to go.
I see there's a new building going up north of A&W. And it looks like they cleaned that trough out that was coming down to the street.
Mm-hmm.
I think there was some cement there and rocks and stuff, and that's all cleaned out now?
Yep.
Is that gonna affect anything, do you think?
No, so the intake that we had just north of A&W was a, was a large intake.
Right.
It was a 48-inch structure where all the water could come in. And that's because there is quite a bit of water that was coming down that old, that old ditch line. Now, the property owner has extended pipe out and then put another intake further to the east.
I saw that, yep.
So, really, we're just kind of, we have that open intake, but it really is not gonna be taking that much more water, but...
And where does that go in? Does that go into the storm sewer then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, that tied into that, that structure.
Right, so that should catch most of, it looks like. I was back there and took some pictures.
Yeah.
For the meeting and you'll see it, it's got a big yellow cone on top, kind of. But so that should take most of the water from the co-op and wherever.
Yeah. Yeah, and the discussion with the property owners, you still should have an emergency safe overflow to drain it from there across your, your property to get it into the storm sewer.
Are you supposed to have an emergency flow, or is he going to?
That was the discussion.
If we don't have it in the ordinance, we can force stormwater runoff, so...
And what runs, what his drain will take will go down that canal to the street then, right?
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, just based on that, it should be less water coming to the street anyway, right?
Correct. Yep, yep, it would be captured into the storm sewer system quicker.
Yeah.
It was always designed to go into the storm sewer system, but now...
But it's gonna hit his intake first.
Yes.
But if the water's too much for the downstream system, it'll still back up. We're hoping that doesn't happen.
Not back up?
Right, but, yep, so that storm water that was coming off the co-op was always going into that intake.
Right.
And now...
Or not going, is the case maybe?
Yeah, draining that way, but now they just extended the pipe out and now it'll still...
The same amount of water is coming to that part of the stormwater system.
Right. Some of it's above ground and some of it's below ground, yeah. And how big is the pipe underground there? Is that a 48-inch or 60?
So, it's actually a 24 at that point, and it goes into a 36-inch when it enters the road, so...
So, the street is a 36-inch?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I was thinking it looked bigger than that.
Yep. Yep, but then once you get down to the extreme little spot right in front of A&W, then that's where it transitions to a 42-inch pipe.
That's a lot of water. And then as far as, once that road gets opened, and I mean, I suppose that could be, I suppose it could be a month yet.
Yeah, we'll kind of play that by ear, but contractors basically, I'm willing to come down, whenever you want me to come down there, take my signs away and open up.
And do we need to be concerned how heavy the trucks are on it at that time?
No.
No. And then if there's any issues where it needs gravel or anything, is that ours to deal with?
Yeah, we had a brief discussion at the reconstruction meeting that maintenance over the winter, as long as it's something small that you can do with a skid loader, that would be on the city. If there's some sort of event where you need to have a backhoe or any sort of exhumation into the roadway, then we'll get the contractor involved.
Okay.
So, if we're thinking frost, you gotta have multiple days where you're down in the twenties, I mean, to get a suitable base, right? And he's gonna make that determination, Gen X, or they're leaving that up to us?
Conversations have been that city staff, myself and Gen X would be making that call.
Do we have the same reserve then when, in the spring, when things start to thaw that? I mean, because it's gonna be a day by day, and that's gonna turn into a...
Yep, I think that's a really good point that we, yeah, that we make that call, or I get a call from you and it pulls it back down and we limit the trucks going through there. Because, yeah, in a bill of march, if we get a bunch of hot days through there and it's getting sloppy there, we're not gonna want...
Right.
Trucks just hammering.
Well, you're just, you're gonna be dragging mud and rock out onto Highway 9 and all these other streets.
Yep.
I mean, is there any benefit to even opening that road? And I'm just asking a question.
Right.
But, I mean, because we're gonna open it for a period of a couple of months. We've got concern about these, these intakes getting whacked by a snowplow or something taking them out?
I think...
And then my concern is, where's the liability on this road when it's under construction? If somebody does hit something, per se, hit one of those intakes?
The intakes are graded, are covered with a grate, right?
So, the, yep, the intakes are covered with grate, and then there's a metal basket will pull it around the top.
It's metal, okay.
Yep.
And is that attached? It's not, so it's free-floating, so to speak.
So, the only thing would be if it was frozen to it, which you'd have the same as a frozen snowbank on the side of the road.
And how many are there? I drove through there, but...
Minimum of six.
Yeah.
Where are most of them?
I'm just, you know, there's more going, what, three on each side from like Fourth going south?
There's a, what, Wemark and then there's a...
Yeah, I have them coming down there.
And you've used those before without problems?
Yeah. As I said before, you need to have something there that lets it log in, otherwise it starts pooling up and then...
Right.
Your guys are out there digging, trying to get away, or they're coming down to try to dig it.
Right. Okay.
I think we need to be prepared to make quick decisions with that stuff if we're, if we're gonna open it up.
Right.
And then if this weather starts to turn, it will, it will turn, dissolve real quick.
Right, yeah, that's a, from the conversation with your staff that plows about, when you do plow,
you're gonna have to push it somewhere, and if the ends are barricaded, do you, well...
Right.
Push it up to barricades on each end, or do you try to get all the way through and...
I know, Dean, Dean Reichs, one of the guys, went and looked at it, the guy that plows it, just so they know where everything is. And kind of made mental notes or marked it out so they know when it does snow, where, where to be careful from, but...
Did they have any concerns? Did they express anything to you?
Not that I recall.
I think it's a good thing.
I mean, the goal is to drive on it, that's what helps it the most.
The time counts the most.
Oh, okay, so not driving on it wouldn't, the world wouldn't end, but we'd still...
No.
Okay. Well, let's play that by ear then.
We just have the person that lives on that street.
Right.
And then Wemark.
Yeah, the people on the street, yeah.
The fairgrounds with all their expo.
But they've been going in from the other side now for how long?
I guess, see what the winter brings.
Right. And the other thought is maybe you open up side streets and you don't open Highway 9 and on the north end. Because really, I think the, getting the mud coming out onto Highway 9 is gonna be...
It's gonna be an issue.
Yep.
So, maybe it might, might be in our best interest to open the street, leave that Highway 9 entrance sealed off and give everybody that lives on it access to their property and driveways.
Unless people don't start going through A&W and H&amp;S, or Sleepy Hollow is their exit, but... All right. Any other questions or thoughts on that? Okay. Did we do number seven yet? We did not, did we?
No.
So, number seven then is approval of pay request number five for $317,753.15 to Generation X Construction LLC for the Seventh Street West Reconstruction Project.
I'll make that motion.
So, I'll second it.
Buska?
Yes.
Greener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
And then on that same street discussion, we've got discussion on weight restrictions and signage for that. And I think some thoughts were this winter and then after winter too. So, if we do open it, there, there wouldn't be any weight restrictions then to worry about?
Nothing more than that's currently in your ordinance.
Yeah.
What does the ordinance say at this point, just...
I think it's like the rest of the streets.
No traffic?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, if I was driving an 18-wheeler, I don't know if I'd wanna drive down it, but that's...
They're, they're driving on it now. Literally, I've watched them get out, move the barricade, drive down.
And who are they, do you know?
I've seen a semi here a week ago do it. And if you go sit on the street, you'll see people coming. I personally have put the barricades back in place. People will drive down, move the barricades, drive around them and drive around, check things out, drive back out and don't...
So, where did that semi go or come from, any idea?
Actually, it, it went in, it went down toward Featherlight, turned around and come back out. How we got turned around in there, I have no idea, but, so...
So, maybe you wanna think about some more permanent signs if we, yeah.
If we get to that point, you're almost gonna have to put up some of that barricades.
Right.
You know, to block traffic on each end and, you know, if most of the homeowners on there can, can access it off alleys, most of their properties, so... But, yeah, it's gonna, we'll have to have some more discussion on that going forward.
Okay.
You guys, they're not working, having anything to do with the, the truck routing or any of that discussion, are they?
I guess probably we haven't, yeah.
Might be an ordinance change.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. All right, any other questions for Scott? So are you going to be downtown or back down here many, many times coming up or not?
Um, probably send our guy down here after Gen X says they're all done with their stuff, just to kind of take a peek and make sure. But, uh, no, I, uh, it's not planning on coming to that next council meeting, will be another pay request from downtown, but.
Okay. Okay.
What, I mean, before you leave, where do we want to make our mark as far as what's going to be acceptable for freezing? Do we? I mean, to get that frost down in the ground a couple of feet, a foot anyway, you're going to need twenties or lower.
I can, um. I know in that post what the frost steps are in Fillmore County and go off that. Or they're probably, Iowa D U T probably does the same thing, I can find that out.
Okay.
And make sure that it's.
But I know like the extended forecast going out, there's, it's.
Warm.
Warm thirties, you know, upper twenties at night, so.
Fifty, fifty and thirty.
And I mean, if it stays warm for a while, it, is it going to help at all to drive on it or not really then?
Um.
It's just more so the season.
It, it's more so just the time. It's just, yeah, because once it's frozen and you have, you know, vehicles driving on top, there's not a huge benefit to all of a sudden they blow.
Sure.
It's just letting everything kind of settle out.
Rain probably helps too or moisture.
Yep, and yeah, in the springtime, all, all that helps.
They did put quite a bit of water on that road, numerous tanker loads of water.
Yep.
Drained out onto that already, but it's been so dry, it's probably evaporated out.
And they did apply calcium chloride to the road there too for dust control.
Okay.
So we saw water last week, that's what we were doing.
The.
That'll be the next thing, you know, if you, if you turn that, open that road up with the dirt, it's going to be like living on a gravel road. So.
Yeah, which we, you know, we planned that to have dust control on there, but once it's frozen, it's hard to apply and rain more.
That's something, Tim, that the, the speed limit could be altered on that road during construction? If we go to that point of opening it?
I suppose you can do a special speed on the road.
Okay, something to think about, yeah.
Yeah, well, we got a couple weeks where it's going to be, we get the frost anyway, so.
That's, that's just a specialty, that's not an ordinance change or anything, is it?
Speed limits are set by ordinance.
If we limit the speed?
But the ordinance should be waived if the road's actually under construction.
If it's a temporary, you might be.
The retention pond is all done, so to speak?
Yes, so the work out there, we still have to verify that everything's going to grow over there. So we have not paid for the full amount on there, they're retaining some, just to make sure the grass grows. But yes, the pond is shaped to the size that we want and all the road control protections done there as well.
Yep.
Talking in the springtime, what to expect with the farmer out there with the Generation X is that they're going to get out there in, uh, in April and start or try to get all of their stuff out of the way. They still have a rock pile where they crushed some concrete and they use that rock for the base and they're going to use that for the basis of some tribeways. So they're going to get in there and then talking with the county and with a couple local contractors about pulling away from that rock pile, they're going to keep going at it. Through, yep, through the springtime and the intention, what I told Generation X is that we, we wait till, we wait till the roads paved and then we address or we take a look where the pile's at, how much is left, how much is gone? What we think is going to be there, if it's going to all get removed next summer, we would just hold off and wait to spread the rest of the black dirt on that field until it's gone, or if we don't think that's the way, then we'll have to have a discussion with city staff on what to do with it.
So is there anything impeding what the farmer would plow up or disc or plant in the spring?
Um, so the, the rock pile out there is going to be, he's not going to farm, he's not going to be able to farm as many acres as he had before, but at the end of this year, everything's going to go back and he will have a slight reduction because the pond was there, but that was always the plan to have slight reduction, but.
And how many acres are, would you guess now a handful or?
Wasn't it six?
Yeah, I, uh.
Three to six?
I'd want to look at that to give you, give you the right answer.
Yep. Okay. Any other questions, any other discussions? For Scott?
Just play it by ear and see what we get out of it. Thanks, Scott.
We're out of motions for him, so, all right, thank you, sir. Uh, next on the agenda is the oath of office for mayor, council, city clerk, effective January one, two thousand twenty-four. I have some here. Do mine first and then I can do the rest. Put these here so I don't get them mixed up. So I, David Breno, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa and that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability, discharge all the duties of the office of mayor for the city of Cresco as now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, sir. Nikki, raise your hand.
I stand this on, you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa and that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability, discharge all the duties of the office of council member in Cresco as now or hereafter required by law.
Thank you, welcome aboard. And then you have a spot to sign on there. Nikki's next, eh? You have to swear too.
I, Nicole Hill, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa and that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability, discharge all the duties of the office of city clerk in Cresco as now and hereafter required by law.
Thank you, and that's January first as well, correct?
Which one do you want, bud?
All right. Okay, yep.
I, Gary Kreener, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability, discharge all the duties of the office of council member in Cresco as now or hereafter required by law, dated this fourth day of December, two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you, sir, congratulations. She has. You have a memory.
Get a sign.
I, Anne Carmen, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa and that I will faithful in it, faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability, discharge all the duties of the office of council member in Cresco as now or hereafter required by law, dated this fourth day of December, two thousand twenty-three.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Uh, next, number ten, resolution authorizing transfer of funds for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, uh, December and fiscal year end transfers. You want to give us, whoops, you just want to give us a rundown quick?
And that's just authorizing transfers between funds for the rest of the year that were previously budgeted.
Okay.
Second.
Amy and Jan.
McConnell?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Buska? Yes.
Number eleven, request to waive sewer charges for Mark Bina, who, that was in your packet?
Yep, and he had a toilet that was licking at one of his rentals. It was licking, I think, for a good six months before he realized it, it entered the toilet.
Till it went into the sanitary?
Went into the sanitary, yep.
And typically in the past, when it goes in sanitary sewer, that's?
We've denied them because we have to treat all of that water.
Right. Right, and so he was asking for a motion for us to waive that, is there a motion for that?
Motion to deny it.
Motion to deny it.
I'll second the motion to deny.
Kreener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Um, next, number twelve, possible motion on job offer for the public works director position.
And that's just a motion to approve the job offer that we sent down.
Okay, then he signed it and sent it back?
Correct, he did.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Carmen?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
And then discuss city.
He plans, he plans to start December eighteenth. They wanted him to stay longer than the two weeks, but he's going to try to get out, so tentatively we're December eighteenth.
We'll try to get him to that first meeting, first day.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yep. Um, and then the last item, discuss city clerk retirement.
So I'm still planning to go, like, January thirty-first would be my last official time as full-time. Um, I do have vacation carryover that has been accrued, so I would be on vacation until like April. So I would be willing to come in and help if needed. With all the changes in the budget this year, I think February is going to be kind of a crazy month trying to get that budget to the county on time. So I'm willing to help if you want me to come back from vacation, some, which will just extend out my official retirement date then until the vacation is used up, but.
And how comfortable are you, Nikki, with everything?
Learning still.
Okay.
I think, I think she has a good grasp on it, I mean, she really gets it, it's just, there's a lot to it.
Sure.
And having the time to get everything done.
Right.
But you plan to officially retire at whatever date in April, so after that, you couldn't come back to help, do I recall that correctly?
Right, so, um, and we can touch base if we find that we need more help or something, but right now, then I would plan whenever the vacation runs out, then I would officially retire. And when you retire from Iber's position, you can't come back to work for four months at least in any capacity, so.
You can't keep extending it if so need be?
If need be, I could, I could wait to officially retire, so, um, I won't file the papers with Ibers until it gets closer, you know, a few weeks out.
And then after the four months, then if something, if we need help with something and you would, are looking to do something, you could. But during those four months, you cannot, under any circumstances.
Correct.
And, all right.
So then who would decide, like, does Nikki decide if they need help, that she wants her to come back in for hours or, or who decides that?
I guess that's, yeah, that's a good question. I mean, do you have an example of what you could need help with, I suppose, who knows right now, huh?
Well, classic example is going to be end of fiscal year, but that's going to be within the four months.
That'll be after, oh.
That'll be in June.
So during that four months, if you have a question, you have no idea what the answer is, you can reach out to?
ClerkNet.
ClerkNet?
Other cities.
Yeah.
The unfortunate part, they changed clerk school to the last week of June. So that's why we're panicking of how do you do year end when you're at clerk school in Ames all week?
They said they took a poll. I don't know who they polled who would have agreed to that, but.
Who does clerk school, is that state people?
Iowa, Vegas cities.
That's the Iowa, Vegas cities.
Just through Iowa State.
Yeah.
That would be a nice week for me to be available, but.
I was just going to say, that's.
So that's why I'm, if we wait and see in April or May.
Okay.
If I wait even a couple of months without hardly working, I could maybe help through year end. Auditor usually comes in July and be here when we're, yeah, audit.
Right.
But we can, I think we just wait and see.
Okay, because as of right now, then, January thirty-first, um, if everything flows smooth, I mean, it could be your last day then.
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, no, she'd be happy to.
Well, I mean, working day, so to speak, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
I think we leave that option out there, just play it by ear as, as we get closer to it, so.
Sounds good.
Any other thoughts or questions? Good, good. All right, that was the last item on the agenda.
Move to a jan.
Second.
McConnell?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Yes.
Meeting adjourned, thank you.